All right, it's six o'clock. Good evening, everybody. So we will open the meeting up.
So to start us off with, I'm going to just welcome our student representatives. That's a beautiful sign of the fall. Thank you for being here, student representatives. So we have Anna Gottwald returning from last year and our new representative is Maggie Gottwald. We are not siblings, but we are related. So I did not type it wrong. It is correct. Welcome. We're happy to have you here and it's nice to have you guys back. That truly does tell that school is back in session and you're a nice reminder as to why we're here. So thanks for being here. So to start us off with our communication items, I will invite Cassie Akerson. Ms. Akerson, come on up and give us the updates for the elementary, what's happening? Oh, can you just, would you grab his and set it over there? I'm sorry. I should have done that. Cassie had my apology. And I will cast your document.
Good evening and thanks for having me here providing some highlights now that school is officially started. We just wrapped up day five at the elementary. We had that one day delayed start. We had our meet and greet and were able to meet with families. You saw in my highlights, we had 98% of our families attend our welcome back meet and greet again August 30th, or they came September 5th. So that is very, very good attendance. I did receive some feedback requesting we provide more evening conference times. So I always welcome that feedback and bringing that back to our leadership team and our district-wide staff development team as we start planning, you know, the calendar and what that looks like. Certainly taking those recommendations into account from families. So just want to say thank you, families. I know that those two days are busy as we're getting back to school, but making that a priority and getting our students into the elementary to meet their teachers and see the school. As you know, in previous communication, we changed our morning drop-off and our afternoon student pickup locations. And I just wanted to provide some updates on that. So far, it's going well. You know, we have a few irons to wrinkle or a few wrinkles to iron out yet, but each day seems to be getting better and better with the morning drop-off. We have worked closely with the Painesville Police Department because that is very different than the previous drop-off and closing down some access to sterns, making sure that our traffic is flowing one way. Students are getting out next to the curb and are able to get up to the sidewalk and walk safely down the school sidewalk, which is monitored by school patrol and adults in the morning. Student pickup at the end of the day, that is very similar in the past. Parents park, they get out and walk across to the school side and pick up their students and then they cross the sidewalk to get back to their cars. That's very similar to what was done. It seemed a little chaotic perhaps, but it is organized chaos, if you will. We've got lines labeled preschool through grade five, so parents know kind of where they can find their child as we come out the door or walking out in a line, which was different than in the past where it was just kind of parent pickup time dismissal, let everybody go all at once. So now it's a little bit more organized and hopefully parents are seeing that benefit as well on their end. So I just wanted to say thank you to school patrol because that was an adjustment on their end and to the Painesville Police Department for their partnership and just helping monitor and making sure that runs smoothly these first few days of school. Looking at kindergarten, last year we had some great discussion and action moving towards adding a fourth section to kindergarten. And I know Superintendent Buller was talking more specifics about enrollment and where we're at with student counts, but I wanted to share that as of right now, we have 74 students in kindergarten, where last year we ended at roughly 70 with three sections. And so that's been a huge effort to have that fourth section in kindergarten, supporting our youngest learners there. Today, elementary students participated in bus safety provided by the Painesville Motor and Transfer. So thank you to those people that came and provided that. Next week, our preschool students will have that opportunity to get on the bus and go through that bus safety as well. Looking ahead, we are, I wanted to talk a little bit about power half hour again. And I know I mentioned that last year, how we do some screening three times a year around reading and math. And so we're taking the time upfront here at the beginning of the school year to check and see where are our students in the areas of reading and math? So we can make some data informed decisions around how can we support students? Whether they need remedial support, on-level support, or advanced support. So our MTSS or multi-tiered systems of support staff are working on that. And then we'll start up our grade level meetings and talking about how can we support students across the board in the area of reading. We're seeing some nice progress there. Picture day is coming up and with that, yearbooks are on sale. It's exciting to think those are right around the corner. In other updates, personnel, we have three para positions that are open. We are in the hiring process, however, moving along, we've had applicants and are in that process. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to fill those positions very soon. We also have one tech assistant. As you know, we welcomed Leah to be a tech team and that's been a great asset. And so we're looking to provide that extra tech assistant at the elementary. So as I mentioned, we're in hiring process for both of those. And there's just three little snippets of other week, first five days of school. Update. Any questions, Colin?
I have one comment. So I'm on the southeast side of the school, pulled up the intersection. I looked ahead and here's a sign that said student pickup with an arrow. Honestly, we can write on what we want. Those are helpful to people. I thought it was the greatest thing I had seen in a long time. And then we're just like a little billboard out there on a wire, but that's all it takes. And it did a very nice job putting that together.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, I'll invite up Mr. Orling, our secondary principal. David, you want to give us the rundown of what's happening at the secondary? I'm going to start this and then I'll share it. All right, go ahead.
Okay, well, to start out with, I just wanted to just give you an update on our progress with PBIS. And that is a positive behavioral interventions and support system that we originally started at the elementary. And so we, our focus has been moving that up into mostly the middle school at this point, but then kind of including the high school, but on different levels. So we are in our, in our second year, we have a group of eight of us that have been going through some trainings and working together to come up with a system that works well for our students and something that can kind of be just a continuation of what they have when they, when they come over here from fifth grade. In a nutshell, and I think as we get into the school year a little bit more, I'll have Mr. Rasmussen come in and give you kind of the nuts and bolts on, on our process and where we're at. But so PBIS is just focusing on expectations instead of rules of you can't do this or don't do this. We want to create a language within our staff of, of being positive and reinforcing positive behavior and, you know, letting kids know when, when they are, they're meeting the expectation instead of always, you know, you're doing this wrong. And so we're working on changing that language. And we want to just, you know, emphasize positive outcomes and how we're, how we're speaking to students. This is our, our, with the next one.
Okay. Are you ready for, I can, I think I'm going to have to click over here.
Yeah, that shouldn't, it shouldn't, there we go. Okay. You can click all four if you want. So what we're trying to, what we came up with was kind of a, kind of a catch phrase type thing of, of something that we, we can have our students aspire to. And those four, those four things, it's what we came up with, it bulldog lead, engaged, embrace integrity, act respectfully, and display resilience. And what this, this is kind of the umbrella. And so what our plan is, is that we have expectations for all different areas of the school. So we have, we're working on, on expectations for cafeteria hallway, classroom, the bus, buses, any, pretty much anywhere in the building that students are. And what, and those, all of those expectations revolve around the bulldog lead. And so our teachers have been, have been, and can you go to the next, the last one there? Okay, so during in-service, we work with our teachers on, on where we were in this process. And last spring, we, we met with them and gave them an opportunity to, to have some input on what our expectations should be in the classroom. Those expectations may be different than expectations in the cafeteria. And so all of our teachers have these and they should be up in their classrooms right now. Just the classroom expectations and then it encompasses everything in that lead. And then we'll, as we continue to move forward, you'll see these in the cafeteria, specific to that area. And then you'll start seeing them in the hallways. And then, and throughout this whole process is we're working on a system of, of rewards and ways to recognize our students who are meeting those expectations. And so that's, that continues to be part of that two-year process. If you want to go back one, and this is our behavior matrix that we are, this is a working document for us. We're still, we're still building on some of these, but this has different areas in the building and different activities. And then those expectations are all encompassed in the, in the bulldog lead. So kind of where we are, just wanted to give you a brief synopsis of what that looks like. And as we continue to grow this, we'll, we'll get you some more information. Okay, any questions on that part?
Yeah, I, I take it then the expectations, you'll have this done for the, the sixth, seventh graders, eighth graders over here by the end of the year, ready to roll out to high school next year? Or don't you think?
Well, we're going to do it next year. We need to, we need to decide what that, what rolling it out to high school looks like. The way that our middle school students are going to embrace this is, is going to be different than the way our high school students are. Right? And so the, the middle school students have experience with PBIS at the elementary. And that helps to carry that over a little bit. So we're in a cohort now with about 10 different schools. Some of them preschool and then some of them middle school, high school. And, and so what the, the schools that have middle school, high school, it just comes down to finding what fits for us. And so we're not, we're not quite sure what that's going to look like at the high school level. But we will be gradually rolling, rolling this out and be in full implementation before the end of the year is what our plan is. It's a two-year, it's, it's meant to be a two-year process.
And I, I take it some of it, Dave, is because of shared areas, high school not understanding that, but the, the middle school kind of in those shared areas.
Yeah, and some of the things that, that we'll be doing will be based on maturity level. And so maturity level of our other students is different than most of our older students.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? And then I just want to just talk a little bit about some updates that we have. Just an exciting first week of school. On the first day of school, Mr. Atherson and I meet with all students, grades picture 12. And this year, we took some other classes together and then we each did a couple of grade levels. But we go through handbooks and some of the highlights with changes in that and just reminders about attendance and parking. And it's just, it's fun to have this, we have the sixth graders come in right away. And they're, they are nervous and they're, what they want to hear is different than what 17 and 18 year olds want to hear. So it's kind of fun to, they're, they're usually very quiet. And we're talking about lockers and classes and, and things like that. And with our high school students, we're talking about graduation and making sure that they are doing what they need to do to be on course to graduate and stressing communication with our students. And, and then the other grades in between, ninth grade is a big one too, because that is the first, this is the first year that they will be acquiring credits for graduation and, and just a whole bunch of different things. So it's kind of fun to do, but we try to get it done on the first day each year. A couple of things going on, we have, we have the FFA plot day is on Thursday from 10 o'clock to 2 o'clock. And they usually have a pretty good meal and they'll have some, some equipment and some tours and everything with the, with the fields out there and that is in the south parking lot. So I hope that you can come over there for a little bit.
One second, please.
It's on Thursday.
From?
10 o'clock to 2 o'clock.
Thank you.
Next Monday, we have our bus safety. We do it out front, in front of door four, and that's for grades six through 10. And then on September 20th, we have the, kind of a neat thing that we, that we are able to have here is a sawmill. So we have somebody coming in who will spend the day cutting wood for us. And we have a whole bunch of wood that gets donated and stuff that we bring in. And then they come and they cut it into, you know, two by fours and two by sixes. And, and then just some really neat pieces of wood come out of there and then we're able to put it in our, in our solar kiln and to dry. And so it's been kind of a rotation process and it's, it is, it has saved us some money because we're not purchasing a lot of the wood that we use. And we're repurposing and it's, it's kind of fun to see the person come and, and do the sawmill. So if you're interested and you want to come on, I feel, on September 20th, he'll be here most of the day. So our middle school and high school yearbooks are, are, can be ordered and information will be going out to students on that. Lunch and breakfast, I was just, I was kind of curious to see if there was a big difference in the number of lunch, breakfast and lunch served the first four days of school this year with free breakfast and free lunch compared to last year. And so this year, we increased the number of breakfast by 57 the first four days and the lunch increase was 241. So I think as we, as the year goes on and the breakfast catches in, catches on, I think there'll be more, more students that are taking advantage of that. Today, we had, we had hot breakfast burritos and, and so they do a really nice job in there. Speaking of kitchen staff, I just want to, there were, there were some things on social media after the first day of school regarding lunch and running out of food and, and things like that. And I didn't want to say we did not run out of food. And it was unfortunate that there was a lot of negative posts, untrue posts. I just want to say how much I appreciate our kitchen staff and Lori and Katie. They work really hard and we have an outstanding salad bar every day. And everything in there is, is fresh. We have great food. We have sandwiches. And it was just unfortunate on the first day of school that things were, were said that just simply weren't true. And it, it affects the morale of the very people who are feeding all of us. And so I just want to thank, thank them especially. And I want people to, to hear what a great job they do. And we certainly couldn't control that it was 95 degrees outside.
Why not?
I don't, I don't, if we could have a flexible start date, that would be great. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll invite up Mr. Hendrickson, our activities director, and hear what's happening in the world of activities.
We're excited. School's back. See the hallway is filled with students again. And with that, come on a lot of our activities. The last time I spoke, we were just about getting ready to have all our activities for high school start up. And now with junior high joining that last week, we have everything going for our fall programs. So it's nice to see that going, all the kids competing again. And it's fun to see our fans and supporters back in the crowds and the gyms and out at the football field. And two weeks from today, we have our big cross-country meet where we're going to have 12 boys and girls teams running from schools around the area too for our big invitational. So we're looking forward to that and getting that organized and got the medals and everything ordered today. So it should be here by the end of the week, I hope. So we're looking forward to that. We're always looking for help collecting gates. I know we had something just didn't work out last week. So we found thankfully about the 11th hour, found somebody to collect gate at one of our football field entrances. That was awesome that she stepped up, Charlotte Schlepper stepped up for us and Todd Spanier stepped up in another gate. So I really appreciate them doing that. I was looking for officials or even for youth, I was looking for announcers and other score table workers. So if you know of anybody who's interested in making Washington pass and you get a great advantage point to watch different events, we appreciate anybody who's wanting to step up. I'm sure a lot of people are just maybe nervous about getting started, but we have a lot of people in our, in our district that I think that have experience officiating different levels and different sports and different things. So we've been willing to help train people in and get people started too, because that's probably half the battle is just getting started and getting your feet wet. So if anybody's interested, we would appreciate them reaching out and just try to give a friendly reminder too to be kind to officials because they are, they're not out there trying to make mistakes. They're out there trying to do their best. We've got really good turnout with our, getting our forms and fees in right away. We really tried to emphasize and get that communication out to families and to our coaches and our athletes. And anybody who's participating in anything to get all their stuff in right away. So it's been really good. I know Cassandra in the office has really appreciated that, how we get everything turned in right away. So I guess I want to conclude with, I really want to thank our coaching staff and everything they do. I know especially our head coaches, it's tough to be a head coach and all the time they invest into our programs and a lot of the, you know, they're all staying after school every single day of the week for practice and they're going on long road trips for competitions and games and everything, and even spending time on weekends. So we appreciate everything they do. You know, they have a, an opportunity to impact a lot of people in their programs. And they do that every single day and those connections they make last a lifetime. So we really appreciate everything they do and we're thankful. I know it's not always the easiest thing. Bosses are hard sometimes or if we don't perform well sometimes. And some things we can't always control that get back to us, we kind of take hard sometimes too. But I just want to know how much they're appreciating everything they do and what they do for our school districts and our, in our community. So all I have for you.
All right. Thank you much. And as I'm pulling up for our community as director, Ms. O'Grady, would you come on up and tell us what we've got going on the indication?
All right, welcome. So we'll just start with some pack information. I think I recorded before we were launching a youth membership and punch, a 10 punch card for, for our daily fees in hopes to provide more opportunity in our space. We're focusing, we're, we're going to focus this year on, on providing better customer service for our patrons. We're trying to, well, especially during our open gym staff hours. So we are trying to have, give our staff the opportunity to be able to greet our patrons. That they'll be able to track their, our daily users better, increasing some of our cleaning protocols. And so we're working on making that a better experience for all around for people. And we are looking for staff, just like everyone else, one to two more people, especially in the October to April timeframe where we moved to two staff. It's busier and we, two staff in the building is, is, seems to work out best for us. In our catalog, we advertise birthday parties. They are online this year. So families can look to reserve their birthday party through our LEO system. And we picked two time slots, 1:30 to 3:30 and 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So we have those four or five themes that they can choose from. And we hope to be able to drum up some more activity with that. Upcoming events, we've got some volleyball tournaments coming up. We have one on Saturday and then eighth grade is going to be on the 14th. Pace setters coming in for two events towards the end of the month and in November. Yeah, like I said, the fall catalog came out. Our youth and adult programs, we used our LEO system to launch that registration for youth and adult programs for ECFE for, we already use it for preschool and for our POS programs. And our registration system has been going probably as normal. And we've got a few glitches, but it's a new system. So we're just helping people through it. And overall, I think it's been a good transition. And our POS school age care, we had quite a few registrations and we, with the staff that we have and the students that have registered, we did have to close registration for our POS program and put, put families on waiting lists until we can find more adult staff to cover, to make our student staff ratios at where we need them to be. So we're working on trying to find people to cover those time slots, especially in the afternoon. So we're averaging around 50 to 52 students in the mornings and then 70, 75 students in the afternoons. So it's a large number of kids that we're working with. So hopefully we can find, like I said, one or two more adults to help cover all the way across the week. So we could open, take the families off the waitlist and maybe accommodate a few more people. Preschool, our junior bulldogs preschools, all new staff this year. And it was exciting to welcome them to our bulldog community. We purchased a new curriculum for that, for that age group. And so we spent some time prior to the all staff training, but we spent some time on curriculum training, some orientation, talking about some policies and procedures. And then really trying to provide that support that they need, especially being a one as a new teacher. So to really provide that support for, for that new staff. First week went well. There were a few parents that cried a lot with their kids, but other than that, it was really good. We have ECFE classes that will begin next week. We are able to offer an additional ECFE class. That's a growth area for the district to be able to connect with young and new, young families or new families that may come into the community. So we have a zero to three-year-old class that will be running on Mondays and then a two and three-year-old class on Wednesdays. And both are near full at this point. We also have a daytime class that we're holding at the PAC and that's going to be based around movement and physical activity. We also have our fall festival that's going to come up October 7th. So we are, on Thursday, I get to work, meet with the committee and, and hammer out the details. But last year, that was a large event and that brought families in to engage in the, in, in the school with their kids. And this year, we're going to hold it at the PAC. We're going to have the bounce house. We're going to have a ninja course. We're going to have carnival games. It's going to be a good time. So we, it'll be a fall festival during that. And that is, last year it served as a fundraiser for the preschool playground. So it may serve as that as well. Adult basic education, we Adult basic education, we, Jay Thompson was the instructor last year and he has retired. So we are going to have a new teacher they're interviewing this week. And we're excited about the possibilities of not only offering G and basic skills, but even ESL as well. Um, so more to come on this program. I, I do see some growth area in that area, this particular program as well. Um, facilities, we're still working on transition. We've, we've got a lot of, being short staffed, we've focused on quite a few other areas. So facilities, we're still running on the old program. And our hope is to have everything transitioned and maybe be working on that before January one, that we'll be launching that piece. So we are still working with the current system in our facilities. Uh, finally, we're, we are looking for a new administrative assistant in the, in our PAC welcome center. So we'll be posting and interviewing and that will be welcomed to have somebody help us out in, in the front office. Um, I'd like to just, you know, to have a shout out to my frontline staff, Melody and Chrissy that's in our POS program. You know, those are, you know, to get things ready and get going for the first week of school is busy for community ed as well. So we're, I'm grateful to have them in my office and in my programs to be able to manage the programs that we have. And then finally, yeah, we, you know, I try to go to as many community meetings as possible. So I'll continue to go to the Chamber of Commerce meeting, meetings at Green Roof. And then there's a committee that's talking about the winter events and there'll be, there'll be more to come on that as it gets a little bit closer. On trying to collaborate the many things that people offer around, especially around the holidays to be able to collaborate that with, with the local groups. And that's it. Do you have any questions?
Registration for community ed now is pretty much through LEO.
Right.
Um, is there a way for people, especially seniors who don't use computers? Do they just do it the normal way or?
Well, we've, we've taken a lot of phone calls and in-person registrations.
I just wanted out there that it's still possible the other way.
Oh yeah, totally. It's in, in our catalog, it even says you can come in person or you can call. So yes, if, if those are not, people, the people who do not wanna, you know, go on the and make their own accounts will help them set them up and, and help them merge into different classes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you much. All right, um, we're gonna invite up Mr. Lang, Jim Langs from Tortoise Tech, who is providing our, our contracted technology support. And we met him briefly at our last work session. So thank you for being here and welcome. And, and what do we need to know technology wise?
Yeah, hello everyone. Nice to meet you face to face. So yeah, it was a busy month of August, getting ready for the school year. Um, so really, we found a checklist that was like a month-to-month checklist. And it had April, June, July, August, and then that was the only four months of checklist we found. But that was able to get us some direction where we're going. Um, from Jonah, there's an incredible amount of documentation. Jonah did do a really good job. And, but one of the things that wasn't documented was processes. Um, so learning kind of on the fly what he did and how the technology team here with Colin and Leah and myself are kind of tree-izing everything currently. So in the last month, we've received, I've received eleven hundred emails, a hundred and seventeen tickets. I've determined that we're managing about almost eleven hundred Chromebooks, two hundred and twenty staff devices, two hundred and thirty-five different vendor accounts, twenty-four servers. And there's a lot in there that's like licensing and so one of the things that came up was, you know, was like, oh, I can't record my meeting. Like, yeah, we recorded. We're like, we have no idea. Well, we found out the licensing expired and needed to get that done. So there's a lot of discovery process going on, kind of like treasure hunt or puzzle. So our goal though, Leah and Colin have been doing awesome. Uh, we're still in the process of making sure all of the new staff, new students are ready to go. The ones who are here and already in the system, there wasn't as much to do. And so that's what we've been focusing on. And then the goal for September is to kind of study the tide, have those processes laid out, like when a new student comes, here's the steps that you do. So, and then not just one person knowing how to do it, but all three of us. So if one person weren't able to, another one could step in or we take different pieces. So, so yeah, so that's kind of the goal for the month of September is just continuing to you know, divulge what is happening and then set up processes internally so that it smooths things out. So, but yeah, I think it's going well. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. And yeah, it's been, it's been a good month. So nice and busy.
And I will just add, in, in addition to thanking Colin and Leah, um, I'm gonna just add a note of thanks to our staff for their patience. I do know that this has been like, and I've kind of made this analogy that, you know, a lot of what Jim does is um, like the backbone that you don't know is there until you know it's not there, right? And so I, I, I do appreciate just patience on behalf of, from our parents, our teachers, our students, just as you guys have really been digging in and just working hard to pull the pieces together. So thank you to our staff and our, our students and thank you for just continuing to plug away. So.
Yes, I have a question. And, and I, I don't envy that your situation, you know, you've got a lot on your plate. But, you know, spending the news here the last few weeks of schools have had security breaches as far as social security numbers and stuff. I'm sure that's an ongoing process as far as setting a firewall.
Yeah, so there's definitely, it's, it's a challenge to, especially coming in, kind of doing what's necessary just to get off the ground. And then there's the, like, the important stuff that we need to focus on. And so, so my hope is, is once we kind of, again, smooth things out to where the day-to-day is normally functioning, then we can make some plans, you know, what are we doing for cybersecurity? You know, and one of the things we're working on is kind of an audit of the systems. And, and I mean, it is well-protected with the firewall that we have. There's definitely areas that we can do for improvement, such as multi-factor authentication for, for staff and strengthening of passwords and some different things. So, so that's definitely on the horizon and I was kind of in the forefront and back of my mind. So, but yeah, uh, thank you for that.
But to your point, I think it's a high priority when Jonah was here and has drawn a transition. Um, with making sure that that kind of a security factor, he had, I mean, we don't talk too specific about our security protocols, but there are a lot of, of protective measures that are put in place to notify and, and they would have. But you're, you're right, Ron.
I'm just bringing it up because it's more, it doesn't matter if you're a school or you, any company, security is just ongoing and there's always.
Yeah, the network is very secure and there's a lot of protections on the Chromebooks for students as well in that regard. So I, I do think that you're, you're at a solid base right now and then, but definitely, I can just grow from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Ozendorf, Buildings and Grounds, what do we got going today?
So, as you are all aware, the tennis court set pile has not moved. So I'll need, I haven't talked to Mr. Ron in a while. I'll do that this weekend, hopefully. So, and then the survey has been postponed, the Parks and Treaty meeting. They're actually talking now about only doing it in next spring, the survey for usages of all the city parks and so on. So it wasn't firmly decided yet, but that's what they were thinking because they are having some technical difficulties getting that out. Uh, LED lighting, so we did get the thousand light bulbs in. So now the crunch is on to get them all installed. I have to have them all in by November first to get the full rebate of that. So we will do what we have to there to get that done. The grandstand emergency door thing, where it did not open in that storm. Uh, I was having trouble hearing back from Mr. Stang, so I talked to his brother. And he was gonna talk to him. I talked to him on Friday and he was actually gonna meet with him over the weekend anyway. So Bruce was gonna get, put a bug in his ear that we need that fixed because Bruce has got some skin in that game. He is very passionate about it. So he's gonna make sure that he gets back to me so I can get with the door company and we can get this whole thing resolved. So, and the city's been on me on that whole thing too, because that is part of the city contract with that whole thing. So. Uh, softball field, I think it looked pretty good. I did get it seeded today. Couple of weeks here and I was like, they keep telling me September fifteenth is the last day you can put lawn seed down. So I made it by three days. So in two weeks, you're gonna see a green field, right? So, but it's way, John did not stop me, I bet you ten times when I was working. He just couldn't believe how nice it looks. So hopefully he's right when the grass is on the field too. And my hope is very playable for the girls, much more than what it was. Heating system, I gotta give a shout out to the entire staff at this building, especially last week. Um, this week's been good. I haven't heard anything this week. It, it was hot outside and we were having trouble with our boiler and the heating system. And we were pumping heat right into this building and it's a hundred degrees outside. So a little hectic for Kim. I did have Yule out yesterday, finally. I caught that our last week, just to like get my head around what's going on with the whole system and, and just try to learn more about it. And it was a great conversation I had with him. He was a very good guy, very knowledgeable. Uh, he'd worked on our system a lot and for me, it was just awesome. And figuring out that we do have a few issues that we gotta take care of with the whole system and get that all up to stuff again and working properly. Uh, I think it's just been a couple of years of neglect, you know, things that have just slipped back. So. And then one thing I did not have on there was roof repairs. So I did have that infrared scan done. There is seventeen. I did share with Janelle and I'll sitting over there so she can share it all, whatever. But there are seventeen spots up on the roof that are, and it's a very well-written document. You guys will be able to see the entire process. And actually, the oldest part of the roof is the worst, got a lot of moisture underneath it. So there's some bad, probably some bad insulation up there. So it's probably gonna have to be. So from there, I'll get that information out to a few other companies, get them out here, look at it and so on and so forth. I'm guessing start that bid process for taking a look at the roof. So there are some very small ones that I think it's probably a little hole. Got knocked in there and we can take care of some of that stuff ourselves for the smaller ones. So, any questions?
The one thing red thing looked like on one of our graphs.
Uh, it's.
Does it show any? Or is some of that condensation that?
He cannot move. Oh, yeah. Uh, there's nothing. Most of our roof are perfect, like the horizon roofs. He found nothing and he walked. So the only roof that it does not work on is the one with stolen on. If it's got a heavy aggregate on top, then he can't, it's gotta be the rubber. Otherwise he can't go through it. So he said, then we have to wait for it to come through the ceiling and all. But yeah, it was very interesting. We're, you know, we have to do that. Yes, wait till the sun goes down. Yeah, so, seven o'clock at night, here we are stumbling up on the roof, walking around. So, yep.
Janelle's in her office and she's scared to death.
Funny you didn't get called in.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Whoa, enrollment, we're excited.
All right. Well, I think I may have accidentally closed my agenda, but this is a document that I'm excited to share with you all today. Let me cast this. So our, our student enrollment is up again. Um, we are excited to share that. You'll notice today is nine fourteen. The newspaper always prints what our first day enrollment was and our first enrollment was nine twelve. So we are up two more from the first day of school. So that's just a, a really exciting moment for us. Because if you come back to twenty twenty, and I've got that on here, you'll see that we lost twenty-three students in that year. And then in twenty twenty-one, we had a net gain of seven. In twenty twenty-two, it was a net gain of seven. And then in twenty-three, we are at a net gain of twelve. So that's exciting for us. And I think when you take a look at our, our building numbers, our elementary school at four hundred and twenty-three in comparison to last year, our elementary school was three ninety-nine. So they are feeling lots of, lots of growth. And that's a lot of student activity. So it's exciting. And I'm, I'm appreciative that the board supported that fourth section of kindergarten because seventy-four in three classrooms with those little bodies would have been really, really rough and, and it would have just not been feasible. So I'm super excited to see this information. One of the things I do think that is, is nice to also kind of have a point of reference is the total students enrolled elsewhere. So that's where you'll see that, you know, we have three students from the elementary school that went somewhere else. Um, and then secondary, there were fifteen. And then you're gonna see like, we had eleven that moved altogether. Four, four students that chose to homeschool. Three open enrolls from other school and then we don't have any currently at West Central Education District. So this doesn't, I'm not saying that's right, because total students enrolled elsewhere. Because these two, oh yeah, no, that's right. It's eighteen and eighteen, my bad. So of those fifteen, sorry, of those eighteen, here's the breakdown. So you've got eleven that went somewhere else or, or if they were in an open enroll here, they went back to a resident district, went to online, homeschool, or they were enrolled elsewhere at like the alternative learning center. Okay? But our net impact is again a growth. We are at four hundred and, or nine hundred and fourteen students, um, which is super exciting for us. Little, little spoiler alert. This is the first time in a many, many number of years that we've had year-over-year net gain. So that's exciting for us. And I say spoiler alert because it should be in the newspaper tomorrow. Okay, so any questions on the, on the enrollment or you'd like to see?
When I go to school, I believe we were maybe hanging around a thousand. For those number of years, we were just losing like regularly. You know, when people asked me if I was gonna run, this is the second time, I said, well, I'm not sure I ever did a good job because look at the students that we lost. This makes it look like we're accomplishing something by teamwork. And I'm gonna go back to what you were talking about on community ed, it's customer service. It is one hundred percent customer service, taking care of students, the parents and the kids is how we're gonna be successful in getting those students back here.
Yes, and I think the other piece that I think is important when I look at, you know, this, this scenario is we need to make sure that we continue to make programmatic decisions that present opportunities for our kids and that can sustain those opportunities for our kids. Because that's really where, if parents are given a choice to choose, I wanna go to a school where I'm worried about my kids gets being super excited about program and then it gets reduced or they don't have those opportunities. You know, so it's, it's something that I think the board has done a nice job over the last couple of years. You've had hard decisions to make when we've been in a declining enrollment and we've been making reductions. Those have been hard years and hard decisions. So hopefully now we can, we can settle into a. Those have been hard years and hard decisions. So hopefully now we can, we can settle into a um a little bit more. Stability and uh continue to just really provide a solid programming. So we can become the choice of parents when they have other opportunities.
Just a question about uh the eighteen that went out. Those are kids that were here last year and are not here this year. It's not the total number of kids that are.
No, that's that we're here that gone elsewhere.
So the the numbers of kids that are openly outside would be higher than that.
Oh, yeah. So this isn't the comparison of in and out um because we have. Yeah, yeah. No, thank you. That's um and I usually, I've done that for you um a couple of different times.
Yeah, we've seen elsewhere.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, the the ones that were here last year and went out, do we do anything to follow up on that? To ask?
Um.
Questions about?
Like a survey of where where did you go? And you know, I haven't, I haven't done a systematic survey. Um. I would say through conversation with administrators, we we are able to pinpoint where a lot of those students are going, what their scenarios are. Um, you know, some, so but I've not done a a systematic exit survey per se.
And I don't even know if it has to be a survey. I just, what if somebody leaves my business and goes to another business? It's nice to send a letter, say, we missed you or sorry you decided to go elsewhere. Um if you have any questions, let us know. And just a letter that just says. Recognize the fact that we missed you. There's nothing worse than an organization when somebody leaves. And they a year later, you ask them, nobody even.
Yeah.
So just a thought.
Yep. Well, that's good feedback. Thank you. Um then. Um, I think I did close my agenda. So let me get my. Uh cause our next agenda item is um the capital project. So. Last year at this time, we were having a lot of conversation about our operating referendum. And when we were going through that oper- operating referendum, one of the the points of consideration. Was understanding and knowing that our our tech levy is set to expire in twenty twenty-four. So one of the things that I I wanted to do was just to kind of start, I guess, reviewing the history. Of of um a bond levy, um just start talking through what that funding is. What it's used for and just kind of just having some foundational discussion. Okay? So just really where we're gonna start, whoops, let me um cast this so that um. There we go. Um so this is really just kind of the background of the capital project levy. Um you'll notice I put in in quotations tech levy. Um that's because that's what you've heard administration reference as a funding source for different things. So. We've just kind of generically called it the tech levy. Okay? So really, again, what we're gonna do today is learn about the bond issue and capital project levy history. Talk about timelines, if the board for a um capital project levy uh renewal. And then frame just upcoming conversations of things that I'm gathering to share with you, if there's other information that you would like to see in the future. So here's really kind of the the history and I put this this ballot question on here. So you can see how specific it was. And there were two different issues that were presented in that um on that um ballot. So school districts are, we have to go to voter approval for an operating referendum, which is what we did last fall. Um when you do a building bond, so that would have been in twenty nineteen when the pack was built. Um or if you have, wanna do a capital project through a bonding um a bonding scenario. That's what this was. Okay? But when you look at those questions, they are two different pots of money. And it's important to know that because the bond sale took care of everything that was in that one bucket. And so you're gonna see that there's like, and I just put some really like highlights of those items. But we had new windows put in at the elementary. We bought the army reserve site. Um there was um the telephone upgrades. There was betterment of site facilities. There were some roof repairs that were done. Those were all part of the the bond money that was one-time money and it was very targeted for those items. Okay, the other portion of the question is the capital project levy, again, what we're calling the tech levy. And you'll see that that was an ongoing funding stream. That was for the, over the course of ten years, we've been purchasing software, computers, updating our network. Providing support for our network systems, um having the infrastructure of our technology. Okay? So there's two different portions of this. What we're talking about is only a renewal of. The poss- the possible renewal of the tech levy. Because when that tech levy um expires after taxes payable in twenty twenty-four. Um our revenue will be decreased by approximately three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars a year. So where that comes from is it's three point two six seven percent of the net tax capacity of our school district. So if if people would look at that bond question, you're gonna see a different dollar amount. Which is the, the percentage is the same, the three point two six seven. But the dollar amount has in increased because what's happened to the property tax value. It's gone up. So then that's generated more revenue for the school district. Okay? So what that means for um for us as a as a.
Sid, can you say that over again?
Sure.
Last bit, because if we have a bond, we didn't get a revenue increase.
No, so the bond, the bond sale was like, if you go to the question, it was like.
Big number.
Very specific mon- number. The the capital tech levy was a percentage. Of your net tax capacity.
Yep.
So they're two different, so that question has a lot put into it and it was two different. You could, we could not have used, the way that that question was written, we could not have used that bond money. To um update the network infrastructure. Likewise, we could not have used um the tech levy money to repair the roof. Okay? So um so the the reason we're ha- kind of starting this discussion right now is because uh a capital. Bond election is different than an operating referendum. An operating referendum can be only run one time a year in a general election. Okay? Or on that general election day. So you cannot run an operating referendum um outside of your traditional dates. A capital bond, a building bond to, so if you think back to when the pack was um was um voted on. I I believe that was in August of twenty nineteen. Okay? So those don't necessarily correspond with general election dates. So um the state of Minnesota sets possible special election dates. And you will see that there's um, whoo, I'm gonna test my eyeballs on this one and I'm not gonna test it. I'm gonna just read it because it's really small. So February thirteenth of twenty twenty-four, April ninth of twenty twenty-four, May fourteenth, August thirteenth or November fifth. So um if, uh one of the reasons I put that out there is because the board is going to need to decide. If you wish to move on and and seek a renewal of that tech levy. There needs to be an election on one of these dates. Okay? But there are requirements about notification for the public and when that happens. Okay? So for the board, that means that you would need to take formal action seventy-four days prior to an election. So taking a look at that, if if the board would decide to call for an election of um a renewal of the tech levy. You would need to decide by December first if you wanted to hold a February thirteenth election. Okay? Similarly, you'd have the January twenty-sixth for an April ninth election, March first for May fourteen. May thirty-first for an August thirteenth. And then if we went out for the, in the general election on November fifth, we'd have to do a resolution by August twenty-third. So the reason that I think it's important to keep those timelines in 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 mind. Um is because there's a lot of information and preparedness that we need to do to get information that you need to make decisions. Um, um, couple of things that are different again here. Um if this is purely a renewal and you're not going to have a capital project like those bond items that were identified. Um there's not the, um there there's not um. Different uh public, like public hearing requirements about the context of the projects because it's purely a renewal. There's nothing different from where you were to where you're asking to go. Okay? If the board wanted to put a bunch of things into a bond project, that changes the dynamics pretty significantly. Because then you have to have a whole different host of presentation for the public about what you're gonna use those bonds for. Okay? Um I did, I, in in all of my conversations coming into the board. Uh when I came on board and what I heard you all talking about, I have not heard that as a desire. And so I, to this point, have not prepared anything for you about having a capital bond in addition to a tech levy. So what I've really just been focusing on is a renewal of the tech levy, because that's also what we've shared with the public. As the likely direction that the board anticipated taking. So. Our next steps, um what I plan to do for you in the future, um at our October works, our October tenth work session. Um having some presentation information for you about the past use of the tech levy and how we're using it right now. So what are the things that have been purchased for that? How was, what's the sustainability of that? The lot, the life and the longevity? Um at our October twenty-third board meeting, um um I anticipate predict um. Providing for you some, excuse me, projected use um if that tech levy um is renewed. And then in November, one of the things that that whenever we go out for any type of conversation with our voters. We've often invited Ellers in to do a presentation about the financial impact. So um I would anticipate kind of tentatively in November, that would allow the board time to meet any of the timelines. That are um that are identified on um what that means for the board. Okay? So it's kind of the, just a real, again, a very, very um high-level overview of where we were. And how we kind of got to where we are. Um but it is important to know that at taxes payable twenty twenty-four. Um that revenue stream for this technology revenue stream um will no longer be coming into the district for a renewal.
So you're thinking that renewal.
Straight renewal, i- if that's what I would look at.
So uh I don't want to start it and Cheryl, you can help me, Rick possibly. Um. I come into it thinking, ah, the textbooks are fifty bucks. I mean, what's the deal here? Well, they weren't fifty dollars way back then. They were like a hundred and forty-nine dollars. I can't imagine what the textbooks cost right now. I'm guessing the textbooks cost more than what the computers do. Um if you buy textbooks and get them into a, so there was a lot of basis of why we ended up going this route. And what the expense we were covering was actually, a lot of it was based upon the textbook. And I think printing a paper even fell into that. There was analysis back then of all the costs that went into how we were doing it. And where this was going to come in and I'll stat a fair amount of that. But just in my mind. It seemed like it was a good value because then we moved into the tech world, the kids were ready for it, but they needed for the future. At the same time, we kind of really weren't spending more money because we had to allocate for all this anyway, which was. Was going to be a problem.
Yeah, so one, one of the things that I'll just acknowledge and recognize is that. Um because of the work that the board had done in relation to technology preparation. Um Haynesville was far ahead of the game um during the COVID era. Of having students that were um able to access technology, staff that were comfortable using technology. Now, I I'm not going to deny that there has been a lot of effort and work on. Um and there needs to be more on how we adapt our curriculum and how we work through making um things accessible in multiple. Multiple platforms. Um but it is the work, the foundational work that the board recognized back in twenty fourteen. To say, we gotta get to a place where our students have an advantage. Um it was, it was monumental. When we had to roll out initiatives wide stream. So um so there was a lot of. I guess, I don't know if I should say forethought to a pandemic, but it worked out in the district's favor.
So the last number of bonds, we also went to talk to the public through a survey before we did bonds.
In twenty fourteen?
Well, we did it at the the last.
All of them.
And it seems like, um I think if we go without asking the public in advance kind of what's going on. Um don't know why, but maybe it's it forces us to get better information out to them. Um through a survey form or whatever, but I think we should consider it. Because we don't wanna bolt into this thing with all of us in our certain bubbles, not understanding what the whole voting population is thinking about. And I think the surveys help us with that. So maybe something as you're putting things together um as a possibility. Uh we're in, the surveys are engaging the public in decisions we have to make and um. The net effect of this one is if it's renewed, it's not really gonna be any different than how it is now.
Correct.
Um with the same percentage coming out and everything. So it's not like we're, we're looking for a pile of extra money.
No.
We're just looking for a continuation.
Yeah.
And but I don't know if we can get that message through where the, maybe the survey information would be better. I know we talk a lot about how we have all this stuff on our website and all the rest of that, but. We have a lot of voting population and looking at any of that. When it showed up in their mailbox, they got something to read.
Sure.
And it's kind of forcing us to get information out to everybody who are gonna show up at the polls.
I like the idea of this survey too, because it just also hands out that opportunity to. So to to just, you mentioned, describe what we've done with the money the past last ten years and how that has been with the district. Pandemic um and and ultimately propose in the survey of, you know, would you be, you know. Willing to renew and, you know, essentially no difference in cost to you today. Or, you know, an increase of a half a percent or something like that to see a a feel out that way, just, you know. Cause otherwise, you know, whether the, a survey or ask people to respond, but. You know, information about what we've done with it to advertise that this is going to happen is a difference. And you're talking about large mailing, potentially twice.
Yeah.
Or survey and then once again for, hey, we're gonna do this. So.
Survey could be done a way to educate as well.
Educate as well as.
Yeah, the question could be, did you know that?
Yeah, correct.
Kind of, yeah.
Glad to get this out there that um we're not adding on something new, we're not building another building. It tells them what we're, what we're doing. It doesn't just show up on the ballot.
What we've done over the past.
When we have a survey out, people will come to me and say, hey, what are we doing with this? How come? You know, what, you know, what's the reason? And once the explanations are out there, a lot of people are more willing to either agree or at least discuss it and come up with some plans. I like that.
But but I think if uh, I agree with everything that you said, you know, as far as the survey, uh the education side of it that uh. That Rick had mentioned, but I think there there needs to be that education for people. So that way, when that survey shows up, they do have somewhat of a background. And I think, you know, you did a fine job. Uh with uh the operating levy as far as the newspaper articles that you put in prior to. Uh so when they do receive this survey, there are some, there is some, I guess, background information. To, as to why we need to move forward with this, you know, to to continue with this, to renew this. Uh and then, like you said, you know, as far as those consent, as far as the survey, what those impacts are if if we don't.
You're gonna be educating us in another month here with some numbers. I, I guess you guys keep going back to two thousand and fourteen. It'd be great if it did stay the same, but I don't know, I find it hard to believe. You know, I know we save money on paper and stuff, but what's in these computers. Isn't for free either. So I, I guess I'd be shocked if we didn't have to raise some, you know, I don't know what percentage. But I guess I'm really curious to see, you know.
Essentially, our, our income from that has increased from two forty to three eighty.
Correct.
Ten years. So.
Cause everything's increased.
Well, property values increase. So unless we have a severe decrease in property values.
And then we'll go down.
Then it go down, you know, but it's a percentage on your property value that remains the same and.
I'm hoping that's one of the questions you'll be.
I'm I'm hoping that's one of the questions you'll be able to answer is if this would sustain us, sorry, we need to increase that, you know. I'm sure that's going to be one of the questions that she'll come up with an answer.
That's why I guess I'm curious to see what, you know, what is it gonna cost?
Yeah, it's a good question.
The other side too is if we did a survey, we'd have to do it before we made a decision to go ahead with a vote.
Yeah.
Oh, so if we wanted to go ahead in February, by December first, you'd have to have a survey out. I mean, I'm just saying a timeline.
I don't think
I know it's too quick. I'm just saying, we don't wanna set a date and then send a survey out. We've already set a date.
Yeah.
So the survey should be directed towards, do you think we should?
Uh, I like August. And I'll tell you why I like August. If you get to election time, first off, you have too much other stuff people are working on. And then we have bad weather days and all that, so people don't get to the voting polls. I never did like much of the winter ones. They talked about it at many of the conferences we went to, that if you had a lot of snowbirds that were all voting, no, have it in the wintertime while they're all in the south. I don't think that's a good idea, but August was the time that, other than a severe storm, everybody was kind of available. And I think that's why we ended up picking um the facility.
August.
On in August. It was just a nice time. Everybody was here that could make it, um, even for egg. Other than, it kind of, it was at a time where people could get here. And we have rain in the fall. And all this winter dries up at the end of October and they're full bench trying to get some all the field and coming to a vote isn't there. But August was my favorite.
Yeah.
My only, um, I think the only consideration that you'd want to think of is um if it doesn't, if you go out in August um and it doesn't pass, are you gonna put this on, you know, my hesitation of having a November, having this question in a November ballot is there's a lot on there that gets lost. Um, and it it doesn't, I I don't think you get the same attention that you would get. Um, so if you would go out in August and it doesn't pass, then then when you go back the following years, it is an increase in your taxes. It's not just a renewal. And I think that's something that you'd want to consider is if you have the ability to run it a second time, if you needed to.
If it sells in August, probably gonna fail in November.
Right.
Three months later anyway. So we can play with the seventy-four days, whatever we want. If it, if it would fail, um, we have a lot of work to do. We can put it back together. A lot of information has got to get to public about what's going on. I'm not sure that we would ever have two votes in one year, no matter when we do it.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we stick around uh those primary election dates because of turn off hopefully for the vote. So uh, I'm not gonna say it's always a primary, there's always that primary election and general election would be in November. That's where you look at the the most of the, as far as voting turnout. But, you know, you do bring up a good point. As far as uh if the uh the slate doesn't pass. And can we recover quick enough with that?
And that was my, my, my point. I knew you wanted to give you a chance to talk, but yeah, let's just have same thought of of. And I agree with you, I guess, you know, I've hardly time to disagree with that, but you know, perhaps for an increase in your taxes versus after the renewal. And if we can have, I mean, I hope to not expect to have two votes, but that can be, you know, if it has to be on two ballots in November in twenty twenty-four, you know, it's
And those are, those are all decisions that I think, um, so we're kind of, we're kind of doing a lot of if thems, right? And and we're doing a lot of hypothesizing at the moment, um, which is fine, but I also think we can look at um what that survey result says. Um, and if we know that there's support, um, but we just didn't get the votes, then we have to do some more education about it. And then perhaps the board would decide, well, let's go out again. Or if it's a resounding, you know, if we get a resounding response, um, then then I think we have to do some significant budgetary reevaluation.
I I guess I tuned off. We went, and I don't like the idea of going with the general election, but if we go earlier, then we have to pay for it, right?
So regard on, if we went with February, April, May, or August, we we run that election. Yes, so that is. So one of the differences there is that um it is just a, at the combined polling place versus all um in no, on November fifth, it would be at every oh um election location. So there are some, there are pros and cons.
I just wanna bring that up, so we're just
It's on the radar for sure. Yeah. Yeah.
But I think I've seen the figures before, what it would cost to run an election ourselves.
Yeah, I I I would have, I have to, I have to, but I haven't.
We have some ideas here. Give me an idea once you come back to us.
Yeah, no, that's right.
I'd like you to make a note of that. I'm kind of curious to see what it would cost.
What it costs? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we have to rush too much because February is an early date and it's always such iffy weather. Yep, there are a lot of people that either can't or won't come out. So I don't think they need
Couldn't imagine not being prepared for February.
Yep.
Been a lot of work to do.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, well, I have some good homework in front of me um that I will bring back to you um in um October tenth, um, and I'll bring that back. And uh, and if anybody else has anything that you think of between now and then, please let me know. Or if you hear from community members, um, hey, they're they're curious about this, please send me that and I will um do the best I can to get it pulled together and um in as, in as clear as mud type of way as I can. Um, I I really appreciated having um last, when we went through the operating referendum, I know that some of the communication that went out was really needy and it was really deep, but there were some people that really wanted that and they were, they were just thank you for the article. And I went, wow, if this is the excitement of your Sunday reading. But I was grateful because at least I knew they read it and they understood it and they were looking, it was what they were looking for. So if you're hearing that people want more or need more detailed information, please let me know and I I'll put it together. So all right, um, and with that, um, I will turn it over. Um, am I turning it over to Chair? Okay.
Okay, um, so we're at that point of information roundtables. So if anyone has and you guys too, if you have something you want, questions or anything that you want to bring up at this point.
I want to say that I was approached by a community member. And um we were complimented on getting the student parking straightened out so that um the PAC area is free and the students are parking in the correct area. I I think there was some confusion in both students and parents and community members. And I want to thank the students too for supporting and helping us out to keep our community happy.
Thank you.
What else?
Um, where are we going to have an open house this fall?
Um, so we have talked about um combining an open house with a homecoming event. Um, and what we're tentatively looking at, well, okay, the slow homecoming date is not tentative. That is, Rick.
October thirteenth.
Thank you. So um October thirteenth is our homecoming game and we have been working with the community foundation um and talking with um other just community members to see how we could um uh host kind of like a somewhat of like a tailgating event that would also um correspond with some tours of our facility and our site. Um, and um really, it would, it would not be a a full-on open house um per se where um, you know, we did it like the grand opening, but it would have scheduled tours. So people would be able to kind of come through, um, walk through the the career and technical education area, um, our innovation center. Again, just to kind of give the community an opportunity to see what they maybe hadn't seen. So um we are hoping that that um that that will come to fruition. There's lots of planning taking place, but it is, um, it to us when we thought about um where people naturally are already here, let's try to capitalize on that. Um, and if that does not pan out, another opportunity would be when we have our secondary um conferences. That might be another time where we could have just some uh different open house type activities. But uh yes, it is on the radar and we are working on it and more information will be to come.
I know when the conversations come up at different places, um, people are just amazed at what we have here. Wow, I'd like to see that. And that would be a great opportunity if we get the advertisement out that it's a possibility for them to actually come and see what this school has done.
I think we want other people to come and see what we have. And if we're looking at what we did on the grand opening, I don't know necessarily combining it with a local event or whatever makes any difference. And you're kind of want it open. So we're back to customer service. How do we have people know what we have here, uh, people that might be curious about our school for their kids? But not want to be um trying to make special appointments, might just want to come. It would seem like the more open house thing, I think, would be better there. Um, sometimes I wonder um if it should be just there. I mean, we have some arts going on, we have stuff going on in original fashion. The public doesn't really have any idea what happens here all day long. And we have teachers bringing their next, putting new ideas and all this kind of stuff, which kind of falls into just kind of how it works where some of that, some hurt to broadcast what we do. I mean, we are in here taking care of students. And um again, it goes back to customer service. I heard that today and that was a sticker for me because I live my life on customer service and that's really what it's about. And that's where we start getting numbers like that, where it starts to increase and I think it wouldn't hurt us. We have a lot of things gonna happen locally. When the parlaying was through, if somebody wants to come here from another school, they didn't come because they weren't sure they could get here. That all over with now.
I think the the biggest point that um that just resonated with me as you were saying that is that um we want to create opportunity for people to be in our buildings any time. And I think one of the things that's that's been really nice during with our like, um, when we have gymnast, in the winter especially, when we have gymnastics, wrestling and basketball, you know, there's multiple events at one time. There are a lot of people in this space and there are a lot of people that want, that have access to kind of walk through and see what's happening in our, in our facilities and um, and I think with the more we can try to publicize those. Um, but I don't want, I don't want them to think that, you know, that open house kind of event per se happens all the time. I think it's trying to make people feel welcomed and invited to be in this space in your school. So
I think that's just a reminder too that we do that by having, we put all those windows in that hall. And we need to make sure those lights are on in there when there's an event going on because the people are just constantly going back and forth there. And that's where a whole lot of the visiting people see what we've got.
Yeah. Other communities are often in awe of what we have to offer. So
Anything else?
Um, I guess I just wanted to uh thank Mr. David Orline for for clarifying and keeping a uh an open door approach to uh some, I guess I had a few different parents approach me regarding the uh uh, in the student handbook as far as excused absences and unexcused absences. And sometimes that gets a little vague and and uh I guess I kind of directed them to, you know, the the door is always open and uh uh just to clarify a few issues. And I think we got that taken care of. So
Great.
And thank you, David, for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I I want to pass on a thank you uh to uh the staff here and uh of the school, especially for you, David, of getting the uh the bulldog out to the airshow. Uh, I'm not on the airshow committee, but it was used to help out the uh uh Paints and Community Service Center, which I am on that that board. And they helped us stuff the bus or at least to get back to the school stuff for the setup. And just the amazing of the kids, the bulldog out there. Uh, there are, I don't know, I haven't seen, I'm not, I'm not a social media person, but uh there were some pictures that were taken and I understand that they're posted. Uh, the the bulldog was in uh the cockpit of an airplane, pictures of that were taken and just uh being at the event altogether. Uh, and it also helped with the uh the the uh bus out there. So I guess a big shout out to our transportation folks of of helping out with that of the younger kids. So I don't know, uh, Cass, if you had noticed it, but the younger kids of being able to get on an actual school bus, you know, kind of for the first time and and kind of those uh their anxieties and stuff were were kind of, you know, taken down a few notches. So I don't know if you saw that when they were uh, if you went to your bus training over there. But uh, so I know just uh it's a big shout out to the school district and and David for getting that bulldog over there for us. We really appreciate it.
Cass, agree with the bulldog.
I still get a big kick out of the fact that we have signs all the way around saying, no dogs allowed on premise.
Yeah.
We may have to change that to only bulldogs.
Yeah. Uh-oh.
I get the bulldog.
Anything else? Otherwise, we are in German.